And Sharpsburg say that they, you know, what you just said.
Uh huh.
But, uh, most of the feedback we're getting is, I want a gas station, but I don't want Dollar General store.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Now, you know, why, well.
Well, convenience, I, I have no idea how much, there's a new Dollar General in Boonsboro, right? And that, that new one there on the corner by Jones Crossroad.
And one in Shepherdstown.
Yeah, so it's a matter of, uh, over saturation maybe might be a consideration.
Well, I mean, that's basically their problem, not ours, but yeah, I mean, you've got to think about that.
But you know, if people say we want it, we don't want it, you know, they're, I, I, when that, I saw the paper and I thought, oh, I really don't know how I feel about this. When you mentioned the drugstores right there, yeah, that's a pretty strong argument. That rural business is, uh, allowed.
Yeah. Well, it was interesting, I mean, the history in this goes way back, but yeah.
Well, yeah, across the street.
Yeah. And that was one of the things that the county commissioners at that time justified the rezoning of the grow farm is, well, look at all this business on the other side of the street.
Okay, alright.
Was then Rome Schwegel with a old World War II Quonset hut, you know, running an agricultural supply, and yeah, anyway, that's all.
Okay.
That's all water under the bridge, it's, is it seven o'clock yet?
I think so.
Alright, uh, who else do we have here? Uh, looks like Vernell, Anne, and me.
Yes.
No.
Here.
Hi, Anne. Uh, no Edie Wallace or Gary, huh?
Uh, did Edie say she was not going to be able to attend?
I think I remember seeing an email that she was out of town.
Yeah. Edie told us at the last meeting she would not be able to attend this meeting.
Okay, so it's just Gary and I honestly haven't seen him lately to know what's going on with him, so. Uh, do you want to wait a couple of minutes just in case he comes in? What I'll do, since I'm sitting here at my desk, is I'll send him a text real quick and see if he just forgot. Stop.
Tom, I just want to let you know that I did mute your mic, so if you do decide to speak, you'll have to unmute yourself.
I've got a barking dog in the background, so I'll keep my mic muted.
Yeah, I, I understood that, I, I didn't want you to have to feel like your dog had to vote tonight.
Well, I'm not hearing anything or getting anything back from Gary, so rather than make everybody else wait, let's get underway.
Okay.
Call the meeting to order. Uh, and Deb, you've got the list of who's present, so do you need us to speak up for the record? Alright, well. I'm here, Vernell's here, and Anne Aldrich is here. Everybody has received the minutes from the previous meeting, any additions, corrections, deletions or changes that anybody has noticed?
Tom, I, I'm sorry, I read the minutes again, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
This is Anne, under, uh, the West Oak Ridge Discussion and Comments.
Yes.
Question I had was, I mean, it, it did a great job of recording our discussion, but Jill gave us a very specific update on who holds the permit and when, when it would be exercised, or you know, what the conditions were that I thought would be useful to capture.
Okay.
Section.
If I recall correctly, Anne, it's, uh, the Herald, uh, Review and Herald is one that applied for the permit?
Yeah, they hold the permit, and, um, I just felt that it probably should be documented in the minutes that, so it doesn't look like we just had this open-ended discussion with no information. Cause Jill did a great job giving us the information.
Yes. Okay, uh, Deb, could you, uh, make those changes for us?
Yes, sir, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, I have no comments, then I'll move to approve the minutes.
Alright.
Second.
And all three of us are in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, alright, moving on. And, uh, put the minutes away and get my agenda back. Uh, everybody got the, uh, form from Megan with the CLG report? Uh, Megan, do you want to tell us, if that report has been received by everybody and if there's anything notable about that?
Sure, so I do have a couple of slides here to summarize the information that staff has compiled, and then also that you guys have submitted to us to help finish it out. So just a little background, these are going to be submitted via an online survey that the, uh, state has available for us, so I will be taking the information that we filled in and, and going through and doing this online. So I would like you guys to take a look at the screen, this is for federal fiscal year 2016. Uh, this report is broken down into four main parts. So this information for federal fiscal year 16, we didn't have any programmatic changes that I was able to find in looking through minutes. Um, you see a little summary of the activities, design and development review that we do each year. So I just thought you guys might be curious to see what we were actually reporting for that section. And then summaries for activities, survey designation, we didn't have anything that we did for federal fiscal year 16, but these priorities for the upcoming year that are under that section, these were things that have come up in discussions with the members in previous years and then again this year. So these were things that we felt you guys were either working on at that point or still working on now. Um, if you want to change any of those priorities, please let us know. But we did establishing design guidelines, finding funding sources, and then in coordination with that, updating a survey. So those were what we were planning on submitting for that, did anybody have any feedback for those priorities? Again, this is from 2016, so if you were here for that and you have comments, feel free and we can always adjust. Okay, hearing none. For part three, the commission qualifications, that's what you guys were submitting information for, and I have a slide here in a minute where you guys can double check what I've compiled. And then part four is general feedback for the certified local government. Just in general, if you have any, uh, questions at the program or you need any, uh, support from the certified local government program, that's the part where you would mention it. Um, we can also highlight projects that have happened in the county. Uh, right now, the only thing that I could find in the minutes were that oddly enough, members expressed an interest in pursuing a demolition by neglect ordinance and property documentation prior to demolition, and that is again from the minutes for the 2016 federal fiscal year. Did anybody have any other general feedback that you would like us to add?
No, I don't think, uh, I have any.
Okay. So please go ahead and find your name and make sure that the areas of interest, trainings, and whether or not you have a resume on file, coordinate with what you feel we have for you guys, I think everybody here is, is good to go. Edie did submit, uh, her information through the form, I have not gotten anything from Mr. Rory yet, so I'll be touching base with him before I submit this, just to make sure he doesn't have anything he wants included. I'll give you guys a second and let me know if you see anything that needs changed for you.
I'm fine.
Okay.
That's what I wrote.
Alright.
Same here.
Good to go. Okay, so I just, we also are submitting these for 2017 and 2018. This is just the information that is a little bit different than, uh, the, the 16 information, so it would have been, you know, your different design and development reviews that occurred, we had a couple of different numbers. Again, general feedback information, uh, we kept the same, um, goals that we had, so the, the survey, obtaining funding and design guidelines, so if you want to change any of that, let me know. Um, as far as general feedback goes, we just left it with no new projects and no additional comments for CLG for these two years. Any comments or questions on this?
I think that's okay.
And this is a report that hopefully next year you guys will review before it's overdue, obviously. So it'll be a little more fresh in your minds about what's occurred review-wise, and obviously your, your feedback and your goals will be up to date. This is just getting us in compliance, Joe actually filled this out for night, 2019, for us for last year. Okay, with that, that's all for the certified local government stuff.
Great, thank you, Megan. Website updates, commission priorities. Which is, I think.
Still me.
Yeah, okay, go.
So for the website review information, I sent so much stuff to you guys, so I'm sorry for the information overload, but I did get some good feedback back. Feel free to continue sending through, um, any comments you have via email. And if you didn't get a chance to do the survey that was attached, feel free to go ahead and do it at your, whenever you get time. It, it's still open. As far as the tax credit site comments go, you all are much more keen eye than I am because I did not pick up on the Portland cement, uh, chinking, and I did actually change the photo that was there, there was a start photo for that that had not the correct use. So we went ahead and updated that. Another comment was to add a list of exterior actions that require a building permit, we'll certainly take care of that, that's not hard to do, I can add that to that page. To quantify permits that are on sites that have a historic structure each year, we can certainly, uh, at least go back a couple of years, if not more, and do that in the future. And then another comment was to provide the tax brochure to Realtors and provide the tax brochure at property transfer. I know a certain quantity of the brochures were to be printed, and maybe Jill has more information on the status on that, but we can research, uh, if those were printed and where they were placed and make sure that there's still some where we asked for them to be, and then obviously if we need to change and, and add some more for Realtors or for at transfer, we can look into ways to do that, that's not a problem. Jill, did you have any information on the survey part of it?
Yeah, the surveys were printed, uh, in-house in, in the county. Um, we did, I think, 200 of them, um, and they were given to the Historic Advisory Committee. Since they were the ones that, that kind of did the bulk of the work on that, Sandy Izer and, um, uh, I'm blanking on the other one, Tom, help me out. Sandy did a lot of work on that. But at any rate, that, that group, they have the brochures. Haven't heard yet, you know, what their distribution has been because COVID kind of hit just at the time we finally got the brochures done. So I'm not sure that they've been able to be distributed, I know that in the county, we have several in our office, we handed several out down to, uh, the permits office to keep in their lobby. So, once we start, the, the advisory committee starts meeting again, we'll get back onto this distribution and, and where we can put these things and, and, um, get those handed out to people.
Jill, if I can, this is Anne Aldrich, uh, I think that was probably one of my comments. And I put it in because, um, there's a house on Route 66, the Maples, which was built in the late 1700s, and it still had its original windows, I mean, the original stenciling was in it, it was just a fabulous house. And the people who bought it immediately replaced those historic windows with, uh, and went from nine over sixes to six over sixes or something. And I, I mean, it just broke my heart to see that lost so quickly when
Yeah.
it was still intact, you know, six months ago, so my thought was, you know, how can we get the word out to people who aren't used to looking at historic buildings or knowing how to, how to deal with it? It also might be a good idea to give them to any home building contractors or renovators in the county so that we begin to educate them as well.
Yeah, I agree with you, Anne, and, and like, like I said, we, we, um, I say we, and I mean, the Historic Advisory Committee had a lot of the same ideas that you guys do in terms of where to get the information out. We definitely wanted to hit up, uh, the real estate agents for sure, um, cause they have a local, um, group that they, they meet every so often. We were talking about doing targeted mailings, um, at some point, once we, we get our feet under us with the inventory, and, and sort of do, I guess, not so much, uh, random, but targeted, um, on a rotating basis to some degree, uh, to make people aware of, hey, you know, yes, your home's historic, but did you know this and did you know that? I will say that, um, Megan's website, uh, has already come in extremely handy for us. I don't know what's going on in Washington County right now that historic resources, um, have a booming interest, but I've had at least three real estate agents call me in the last two to three weeks about various historic homes across the county. And I was able to, to direct them to that website to show them, um, what Megan has put up there in terms of, you know, different ways that you should be able to preserve, how many, you know, the, the tax credit program that we have, um, and just, you know, all the information that she's already put up there. So it's already starting to pay dividends for us to be able to let real estate agents know. At some point, what we wanted to do in the future, um, was even have, potentially have, um, a meeting or get on the agenda of the local real estate agents group, because they, they apparently have meetings every so often, for part of their continuing ed, and, and kind of do a workshop with them to say, hey, you know, we're a resource here, please use us, please understand what this means. So we had a lot of things in the barrel, ready to go, and COVID kind of kicked us in the butt here a little bit. But these are all things that we really want to start getting out there and doing, um, once we're able to safely get out to people again.
Excellent, well, I, I also want to compliment Megan for the website, cause I, I was very impressed. I learned stuff, and I was like, yay, finally.
Well, that's, that's good to hear that people are contacting you about it too, that's, uh, shows that we're doing something right, so congratulations, Megan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm glad that it's being used. Can everybody see the, the slate roof here with the tax credit screen? Okay, so this is the picture that I chose to switch it to, it's kind of generic and should, should be okay, I hope. If anybody wants to make a comment about the picture, feel free, I can always, it's very easy to change. Um, I did just want to scroll down through this, just to remind you guys, we did finally find the ordinance, thank you, Deb. She got that for us and scanned that in, um, so that the ordinance is, is here for people to actually read it. And then it's also under the document repository on the county's main website, so that if people were to search the county's website, it should come up for them now. The other thing that I'm not sure if people had here when they were scrolling through, let me get down here to the bottom. Hopefully everybody will be able to see this once it loads here in a second. Of course, it's going to take it a minute. So I wanted to try to put a little bit more information about the tax credits out, so I'm not sure if this, this was here when everybody looked at it, but this is the amount of the tax credit by year. And then this is the amount that was in, um, credit for rehab and amount for new construction, obviously we get more requests for rehab. I, it makes me cry a little bit that we've only had 38 in about as many years. Because 2015 is the last one that I can find, and we're in 2020. So it's been several years since we've had someone apply. Um, and you can see that the majority of them were based in the city of Heggers Town, uh, and about less than half as much in the county. So hopefully we can get this boosted. Uh, and then I also went ahead and put a map of where they are that you can click in here and pull up just what the credit was, how much it was, and that it was rehab and that kind of thing. So that's just another little way to visualize that for the tax credits. Does anybody have any questions about the tax credit page after I just quickly scrolled through it again? Okay, I'm going to go to the other page that we have here, it's easier to talk about this when they're up. So I did, uh, just get general feedback on these, that they were good to go, so I'm just going to quickly go through what's on each page, just in case anybody else is watching. So we have Historic Resources main page, where we have organizations that people can contact if they have questions on the state, local, and federal level. Uh, we also have the technical resources which you guys use, Secretary of Interior Standards, Park Service Briefs, that kind of thing, and then any other technical resources that we could find. Salvage resources, if anybody gets any more of these, I would love to have a, a bigger list for this section. And then these are recommended reads, these are links to the library, uh, Washington County Public Library if they had the book, and then to the publisher's webpage if the library did not have the book. Some of these were books that I used in college that I really like, and the rest of them were off of the 14 essential preservation books from the, um, I just lost my train of thought, from the Historic Trust at this, at the federal level, National Trust, there we go. So that's a good list of books, and it had some good ones on there that I enjoyed too. So any questions about this page?
Yes, Megan, would you go back to organizations, please?
Sure.
This, I just need to see the address for Sharpsburg. Sharpsburg Historical Society, uh, the address is 101 East Main, oh, that's Smithsburg, I'm sorry. Uh, did you want addresses for the other historical societies?
So I linked to a social page if I could find it or a website, so your website had your information on it, so I didn't put yours, if that's sufficient, I'll just leave it as is. The reason why I did Smithsburg's with an address is because I couldn't find a web presence for them. If anyone is aware of a web presence that I couldn't find, please let me know. Or if they have a better contact, if they have a, a member with an email address, I can always add that, um, obviously.
Okay, I think I, I could be able to help you with that.
Okay, thank you. So this is the Learn About HDC page, just real quick, this one is what I could find about the creation of the HDC, the duties and your powers. And this is mostly coming from the zoning ordinance, and I tried to link to that where I could find that information. Certified Local Government, just a brief description of how that came to be. This is mostly, I took this from the comp plan and then some of the notes from the design guidelines that were previously written but not yet adopted. And then your agendas and meeting minutes are in here, uh, these will have everything but the current ones. And then this is actually from the design guidelines that didn't get adopted yet, but I, as far as I can tell, it's still applicable, and it might help people, so we did the building permit review and also the demo permit review. So I encourage you guys to let me know if you see anything that doesn't look right with that. Any questions on this page or things that you think should be added or taken away?
The, the building permit review, I wonder if that is a place where the problem that Anne mentioned about the Maples might have been caught?
Um, I'm not sure, the, the research of the list of things that require a building permit, I'm not sure if those windows would have triggered it. I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, yeah, I'm not sure that replacing windows necessarily requires a building permit, so that's, they probably, even if they do, most people probably wouldn't even know to do it. So my guess is, is that they replace the windows without any kind of building permit, which I don't think they need. And that would get you, cause, I mean, technically you have review over exterior, but if it doesn't require a building permit, it's, these things are going to happen.
Is this something that we ought to be working with the permitting folks to maybe add some things that are critical to preservation of historic building exteriors?
Sounds like it, Anne.
Sure, definitely a topic that we can, yeah, definitely a topic we can, we can, um, elaborate upon as time goes on. You're going to get stuck in this situation of building code versus, um,
True.
the historic restoration standards. Because I'll be honest with you, I don't think the county's going to be interested in requiring people to get building permits for, um, changing out windows or, um, things like that. It's a fairly conservative area, you would have to amend your building codes, you would have to amend, your historic standards. I'm not going to say it's out of the question, I'm not going to say it's not a discussion that we should have, because even if we don't require building permits, that doesn't mean we can't educate people. It doesn't mean that, you know, if somebody comes in and asks about, uh, replacing windows, we can't educate them, uh, whether they need a building permit or not, so, um, I think it's a valid discussion to have.
I was going to say, Jill, yeah, I mean, I would agree that it it's a problem with a historic house, but in this county, trying to get somebody to get a permit to change out windows, we're gonna, we're gonna get we're going to get tarred and feathered, ridden out on a rail.
Education is really important and that's why the, the Washington County Historical Trust is putting on this window preservation workshop is to help people with older homes know that they don't have to ruin the beauty of the building. They can still weatherize them. They can repair them. All sorts of things. So hopefully, some folks will come, show up for that workshop. And it'll probably be a workshop we put on almost every year because it's our, it's one of our recruitment tools for trying to find some folks to help us rebuild the Sailor House windows appropriately.
Yeah, so very good resources to have. And I think that we will, we will continue to have those conversations. Megan, I know, is working on that advertised through our public relations office. If you want to elaborate on that, Megan.
Yeah, so I did request that through them. And please, if you guys do find educational opportunities or seminars or things like that that you'd like to, you know, piggyback on, like this type of conversation, or you actually just want to promote that are historically related, please just let us know because, as I mentioned, Ann, our PR department is more than willing to share these things on our social media pages. And especially when they cross so many different organizations within the county as a collaborative effort. They really want to promote that stuff. So please feel free to send them to us and I will forward them along.
I would be delighted to it. It took a few days for me to remember that I probably should do that.
Yeah, they, they're usually more than willing. I haven't heard back from them yet, but it's COVID is, is taking up a lot of their time. But they do like to have these good news things that they can promote as well. So I will definitely make sure to follow up with them and see if we can get that promoted. And then, of course, yeah, send me anything that you do end up getting.
Well, thank you so much.
Sure.
I think these would be good topics for our targeted mailings as well.
Yeah, definitely. And I will say, just to kind of wrap that little tidbit of conversation up, that for exterior changes like that, that, that do have such a large impact, those design guidelines that we're still talking about, kind of in the background, would be a good reference for people to see what they could do as an alternative to just taking the windows out. And then if that's a frequently asked question that the permit office gets, do I need a permit for windows in a historic house, or do I need a permit for a window at all? We could put that as a frequently asked question on the Historic District Commission page and direct them to the fact that if it's some type of exterior change like that, we would prefer that they try to keep the exterior appearance intact. And that way, when someone's searching on the website for it, it pops up the good information instead of just, I don't need a permit. So we could definitely work with the website to get that taken care of. Which I made a note for.
Excellent.
Sure. So for demolition, I really felt like this was a topic that we've touched on so much that it needed its own place to reside. These demolition alternatives that you see here are from the design guidelines that I found that apparently the members had talked about before. They're very much in line with more of the national standard for demolition alternatives. So I just went ahead and put them on here, knowing that. So hopefully, we can change the conversation a little bit. Unfortunately, I did have to put that it's only a hundred dollars per day because we haven't fixed that part yet. If they do decide to do a demolition without a permit, but it is on there.
Megan, please don't leave it yet. There, there seems to be a strong contradiction here. It's strongly discouraged and then we have a hundred dollars. I, I don't know if it's strongly, if we really want to say it's strongly discouraged, because I would say, how do we substantiate that?
Strongly discouraged, but not punished.
Well, you know, how's it discour-, you know, that we, we ask people to apply and then come give us their story, but that doesn't seem that that's strongly discouraged. Maybe instead of demolition being strongly discouraged, we encourage, go at this from a positive way.
Absolutely. I could definitely do that.
And encourage preservation and reuse of significant buildings. You know, that's, that's what we would like to do rather than discourage, I think.
Preservation and restoration.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's, this is, demolition isn't the name of the game. The name of the game is the opposite. So instead of this negative, you know, and, and I just don't think it's strongly discouraged. You know, in my little bit of experience, I don't really feel that.
No, absolutely. I can change the wording on that. I agree that that's probably better to start out with a more positive narrative than a negative sentence. Totally agree with that. Because in the next sentence, I do, you know, encourages property owners to do the, the alternative. So that is more in line with the, the rest of the narrative on the page. And then, do you still want me to keep the hundred dollars per day? It's just, it's not very clearly mentioned anywhere else on the website, so I thought it was important to have there. I can make it the same size text, so it's not as bold, or I can leave it as is. Any comments on that portion?
Well, Megan, I thought it was just a flat one hundred dollars. It wasn't per day. It was just. So.
From what Jill's research that she shared with me, it would be one hundred dollars per day as the max. And it's dependent on the court to how much they want to apply that per day portion. But I'll let Jill.
Yeah. Herein lies the issue. There isn't really a defined, specific quote unquote fine. We don't really have any fines in the ordinance. So what happens is, is that when somebody is required to get a demolition permit, but does work without a permit, whether it's demolition, construction, rehabilitation, whatever it is, irregardless, the building code states and the county law states that if you do any kind of work without a permit, you could be subject to a civil fine, a civil violation, not a fine, a civil violation of up to a hundred dollars a day. And it's mitigated through the court system. Typically, and here's where the no punishment thing comes into play, is that typically, the county does not pursue these civil citations. One, it's expensive for the county to do that. You know, i- it takes legal time, it takes court fees, it takes all kinds of stuff that, you know, and, and on top of it, the county's position is, we want to, we want to get people compliant. We're not doing this to be punitive. We're doing it as a deterrent to make people compliant. So what has happened in the past in talking to the building code officials is that typically, if somebody goes out there and, let's say they start putting a deck on their property and an inspector drives by and says, no, 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 you need a permit for that. What they tell them is you need to stop work immediately, go in and get a permit. And then there's typically no fine, no anything assessed with that. It's more that we want you compliant. We don't want to, to be punitive. There has been cases in the past where there are people who know the rules, they know better, but they continue to disregard the rules and they have been charged double application fees or in very, 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 very few cases, civil citations have been gone after. But that is, that is the very extreme. So what we were trying to seek and what we want to talk to the county administrator about, and I'm still working on this, in the case of the demolition permit that you guys heard last month, was to get verification from the administrator that, at least for demolition permits, that we would get double the fee, the permit fee. Because the problem is, is that with a demolition permit, once it's done, it's done. You know, charging them a hundred dollars a day for every day that it's been demolished, that, that seems kind of aggressive and, and overkill. Because like, again, what I said, we're trying to seek compliance. So in this case, with, with the demo permit that we looked at last month, the problem is, is that they applied for the permit, so they did what they were supposed to do. They just did the work before they had the permit in hand. So what comes into play now is trying to define the difference between a penalty versus a civil citation. And that's what we're trying to work out now with the county attorney's office and the county administrator's office to get that worked out. So technically, the law says that for, it's a hundred dollars per day for every day you're non-compliant and working without a permit. But again, that's a rare instance where we will have that mitigated in court. Typically, what we try to do is get them in there, get their building permit and get them in the right, in, in the right frame. Does that make sense? I mean, it's, it's a little convoluted, but that's essentially how it's being handled.
That, that helped me a whole lot. Thank you. I, I, I think that that sentence probably needs to stay on this page, but I wonder if the body of the work of this page, you know, the Historic District Commission encourages property owners. I, I would say, shouldn't it be the county encourages property owners to consider demolition alternatives? See below. Put that all in the same typeface. So.
Yeah.
You can.
Yeah, I think it would be good to say the county. It's a united front. It's not just the Historic District Commission.
Right.
I think that's important.
Okay. Anything else on that paragraph? And I'm sorry, did you say to keep it the bold text or to take it into the same text as the rest of the, the paragraph narrative there?
I would, I would probably bold, you know, put all the writing above the picture in bold.
Okay.
And I probably would bold the demolition alternatives also because you've got enough space there to increase the font.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it needs to be more bold.
All right. We will take care of that. And then along the lines of trying to prevent it getting to the stage where demolition seems to be their only alternative, trying to encourage ordinary maintenance. And then also for things that are slightly above the ordinary maintenance, trying to encourage people to check the historic tax credit page. And then I happened upon this document, which I thought was great. I would love if you guys read through this and let me know your thoughts. But it goes through how to do maintenance on a historic structure, talks about some of the failure points that you might find common, and this was put out by another jurisdiction up in Pennsylvania. And then at the very bottom of it, it has a checklist for things on the roof you should check each year. Flashing chimneys, all these that are related to historic structures and their failure points. And I just thought it was a really good document. I wish we had one similar, but it's, it's already here, so I linked it. So I would encourage you guys to check it out and give me your thoughts if you have any on it. It's just an interesting document and I thought it was well put together, but it's from the Delaware County, Pennsylvania jurisdiction. So I put that there as well to kind of help people through that. And then
I, I see it. I see it. Very good.
Yeah, that's, that's very good.
For demolition by neglect, I just wanted to make sure we had something on here for that. And then I also linked to trying to tell people that if they don't have the funding for it, there are some things that they can do to mothball a historic structure that don't involve just tearing it down and, and that way you have the time to seek funding. So I linked to that preservation brief for that. Any questions on this section for ordinary maintenance or demo by neglect or things that you think we should add?
Yeah, I'm glad we put, you put the demolition by neglect in there. I think that needs to be out there. I know right now, we don't really have anything to prevent it, but at least make the awareness, I think is important.
Okay, good. And then for this section, I just wanted to, again, reiterate to people that if they own a historic structure, having their own documentation, building maintenance and making sure that you have adequate insurance and you research contractors and everything are, are good things to do. And that's from the National Trust document that I have linked here. And then obviously, six reasons why everyone should save an old building, also from the National Trust. If anybody has any other resources that they like to share with people, I'd be happy to put them there. And then also just a section where if they do get to that last building or demolition alternative where it talks about documentation, just to mention that they can either contact our office or the Maryland Historic Trust for guidance on documenting their property before they go and do anything like that. So I did make sure to put that on here as well. Any questions on this demolition page or any other things you think we should touch on for it?
I think it's very good.
Had we talked about documenting as a part of the application for demolition? It seems that we thought that that might be part of an application.
There are other jurisdictions that require that, and I'm actually going to talk about that in a second. But I don't think that there's anything in our current portion of the zoning ordinance that talks about the requirements for documents for you guys that mentions full documentation before demolition. Now, the design guidelines that I was working on, that you guys had started, I say you guys, I'm not sure if all of you were there at the time, but that the previous commission had started, did mention doing that type of documentation. And I think that's another thing that Jill and I are going to work with the county attorney on to see if we have the latitude to require that or if we need to actually put it in the ordinance. So that is something that's on the list. Because just about every jurisdiction that I've looked at or talked to that's got a robust program requires that. So I feel like that's a good direction for us to go. There's a precedent for it with other jurisdictions. It just makes sense.
Good.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Very good.
Last thing on this page is just the glossary. If anybody finds any terms that you feel need to be added to here, please just email them to me if you are using it or refer somebody to it that the word isn't there. Just let me know and I'll add it in there. Nothing really special about that page, other than I just thought it was important to have some terms. Did anybody have any that they thought should be added? All right.
You know, Megan, I haven't spent a lot of time on this page, but the one that leaps out right now to me in the county is the city of Hagerstown has a city landmark designation that has a lot of benefits. And we're working with the city right now to, to make the Sailor House in Gowanus Park a city landmark. And that might be one you want to add.
Okay. Noted. I could definitely do that. And I will try to actually, I don't actually have very much links, very many links to their page, but we do work with them on things like the tax credit. So I'll try to add some, a little blurb about them on here for that. Okay, can everybody see us back at the website review screen?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So as far as the survey results, we did have three people that turned them in. So I just picked what the choices were for choice one, two, and three, what, what everybody picked for those. And let me switch this one screen here. So the main themes for the demolition alternatives were to definitely do the historic highlights. Workshops, the status priority was was one that was someone's first choice. I will say that choice two seemed to have and choice three seemed to have a consensus where people really like those targeted mailings and rolling mailing. So it seems like mailings might be something that you'd like staff to actually pursue. So I think that we can definitely start there. And the historic highlights is something that we've been talking about. So I can probably get with PR about doing that. And then I believe we might get in contact with the Historic Trust to see if we can use some of the articles from before as well or come up with some some new content for that. We did have comments that posting signs for demolitions, increasing the penalty, which we just talked about, and then concurrent implementation of some of these things was was encouraged. So does anybody have anything else that they wanted to add to that discussion about demolition alternatives? Or are we good with staff pursuing mailings and historic highlights as listed here?
I think it's a possible thing to do with too much new consideration involved.
Yeah, it just seemed like you guys were really into the themes of the targeted mailings and workshops. So basically getting the word out. And that's something that as the staff here, we can work on that with our PR department and see what we can do about getting that word out. Any other comments on demolition alternatives?
No.
Okay, tax credits. Trying to get more usage out of those. These are the listings for the, again, the people that have completed it so far to expand it to the rural villages, expand to other structures, increase the percentage. We had a consensus to again expand to national register districts for the second choice and then just general promotion of the tax credits. And then choice three, expanding to rural villages was was someone's expansion to other structures. So it seems like that expansion of rural villages and to other structures is definitely something that a majority would like to pursue. And then as far as comments go, a regular reporting of tax credits alongside real estate stats, I would love to do that if we had more usage of them. Definitely highlighting them when we do have them would be a great idea. Does anybody have any comments in addition to or comments about staff pursuing some type of expansion with the tax credits?
Arnold Plato is the one who compiles the real estate summaries every month.
Okay.
Do you know him?
Do you know? I do not.
Okay, let's suggest that he might be someone to talk about, including this in his report.
Okay. We'll definitely check that out then, see if I can get in contact then. Any thoughts, anything else about the tax credits as far as the priorities go? It seems like expansion to rural villages, other rural villages. And then National Register Districts is something that is high on the list. Okay. We will go with that then. As far as inventory updates go, updating the status and uses was the choice number one for everyone. So I feel like that's probably something that we should take a look at. And then updating pictures, expanding to 20th century and prioritizing were choice two for several. And then updating pictures and expanding to other rural villages, two people had picked that for choice three. So it seems like pictures and statuses are where we're at with the inventory. So taking our existing inventory and looking at the status of the structures that are on there, whether they're intact, deteriorated, highly damaged, whether they are the status of whether it's been altered or unaltered. And then also updating pictures is where you guys seem to be going with those inventory updates. Is that sound about right?
That that sounds very good, and it could also be right up PR's alley.
So the the other comment, one of the other comments was who will do the work? So as far as existing inventory updates, I don't know if you guys are on the Maryland Historic Trust's mailing list, but they did just put out their grant application for noncapital. They have some guidelines that they just put out and then opened the application period. So that might be something where we could say that we want to update the statuses on the existing resources and get better pictures and documentation on them, like pick an area like the urban growth there where they're more susceptible to being either demolished or the integrity lost. So we could, we could probably do something like that. The other thing I will say is that inventory updates are also part of the Historic Advisory Committee's wheelhouse. So we would definitely want to coordinate with them. So knowing that these are priorities that you guys have, we would definitely get in contact with them and let them discuss it as well and see if everybody's on the same page. Does that sound?
That that sounds like a funding source. But I I wrote the question about who who will do the work, not who will pay for it. That's still the question, you know, who will do the work?
Right. So in the past, we have had consultants take care of that.
Okay.
So it could be a consultant. As part of the application through the Historic Trust, you can do in-kind services. So it is something where we could have someone under the supervision of a person that meets the state's qualifications, take these pictures or update the documentation, but it has to be supervised by someone who meets standards. So it would be an architectural historian or something along those lines. So that's a possibility. I think for the first part of this, we were just trying to see what what everybody wants to do. And then we have to figure out who it is that's the best to do that work in the time and the funding that we have allows. Does that help?
Yes, it does. And and funding is certainly is possible for this kind of research.
Yes, it seems the state is is keen on it, and there are several other entities that could that could help with that. Comments on prioritization? I'm sorry, did anybody have anything else on inventory updates? Okay, so comments on prioritization, just that staff research would be helpful here, which we can definitely provide some examples of of ones that we've seen. And I do completely understand there was a comment about the fear of certain types of resources being considered less fancy and yet they're the most at risk. So I do understand that, and that would definitely be something that it would have to be. We would have to work with the definitions very carefully if if it is something that you decide to pursue. And then the theme, I just copy and pasted the the last comment, so I'll let you guys read that. But just basically trying to protect those resources in the urban growth area that are still intact and have integrity and making sure we have documentation for as many as possible. And then we had any additional topics that you guys would like to talk about. And I did have one comment in there that I just wanted to talk about, which was the comprehensive plan. There was a comment about whether this has affected that historic element, and the document is still fluid. Obviously, you guys have made comments on it before. But Jill has been very adamant that there are certain portions, especially numbers and in relationship to state guidance, because that's constantly being put out. Those types of things will have to be updated. And at that point, before it goes to the public again. And at that point, we can definitely make sure that it's still jiving with everything that you guys have been discussing as a group. Just wanted to put that out there to set that at ease if anybody had questions about that. Anything else? Okay, again, the survey will still stay open. Mr. War, I don't think it filled it out. Tom said it was extensive, but he wanted to read through it. So feel free to go back through it. And I can update this. Obviously, if your priorities change, I'll let you know. But I'm going to stick with the ones that we discussed here.
That's fine. Thank you, Megan.
And then this is still me. Do you want me to keep going? So this, we did a survey. This is the jurisdiction survey for demolition process and inventory and tax credit questionnaire that we sent out based on some of the discussion preliminarily that we guys that we had had with you guys. We we sent a quick survey to some of the other jurisdictions in the state, all 22 county jurisdictions, to see what they had going on. We sent this out June 1st and followed up again June 9th with only those jurisdictions that had yet to respond. We did get nine out of 22 jurisdictions to respond with St. Mary's still potentially responding. But they are actually taking the questionnaire to their HDC or equivalent agency first. And I did check before the meeting, and they hadn't submitted yet. So these are the people that have responded or the counties that have responded. One of the questions that Jill thought it was important to ask because of all the discussions we've been having is whether a jurisdiction had regulatory authority to deny a demolition permit. And you can see that it is rare, at least with the group that we surveyed, for them to actually have the authority to deny the permit. For the two that responded, yes, I'm definitely planning on taking a look at their ordinances to see how they achieve that and how they differ from us.
Which counties were those, do you recall?
Let me see if I made a note here.
I think one was Anarundel.
Anarundel sounds correct. I don't remember the other one. I'll have to double check. I have the full spreadsheet that I can send to you guys if you'd like to to read it. For sure, I can send that to you guys just to have as a reference.
I think that'd be useful.
Okay, I can definitely take care of that. So for the one that listed other Frederick County registered properties, the they can work with the owner to formulate an economically feasible plan. And if not, then they have 90 days to negotiate to find a way to preserve the structure. So they don't have a way to deny it, but they basically have a delay of demolition. It sounded like to me.
Sounds like it.
Yeah. So that those three are probably ones that we should take a look at if that's obviously something we're still trying to pursue. This is a lot of text, and I'm I'm not going to read through it all. But the main takeaway that I wanted to have you guys have for this is that a minimum fine for those that do fine for demolition seems to be $500. So we are below. And we also, I will say this, prior to this meeting, I tried to research the other entities that didn't respond and find whether they actually had a fine. Information about this is so hard to find. Even from a person who knows how local jurisdictions set up websites and kind of the keywords to type in, I was having a lot of trouble finding this information, which is why I originally decided to send out a survey. But it seems like some of the entities that did respond, their websites don't necessarily correspond with what they told me. So I'm I was trying to find the documentation. So whatever we do decide, we should be well documented and clearly posted and within ordinance or something there, because it is very hard for for people to to find it. And if they can't find it, they'll just assume that there's no consequences. So that's my biggest takeaway from this particular portion. That and that there are some entities that do do that demolition delay. So that could be something to pursue.
Megan, I just checked the data, and the other county is Prince George's.
Prince George's. Did I already have Jill attach that for you guys? I had her send the sheets. Okay. I couldn't remember if we had sent those before. Okay.
I better go look at my email. I'm bad.
I totally forgot that I had Deb attach that. But yes, the the full survey is attached then.
Yeah, it was. It was interesting reading, really.
So this was a question, a sort of a section about tax credits, kind of similar to what I sent you guys. So did the jurisdiction have tax credits? And I thought it was interesting that the majority of them that responded did not. And that we are not alone for the ones that did respond. It is not well used. And I
Really surprised that that many did not.
And I tried to go through and double check that. And I did get some other information on jurisdictions that did not respond. And I can provide that to you guys later. I didn't include that on here since this is a discussion strictly about the survey. But I did go and search for ones I could find. The biggest thing that people were mentioning for tax credits was the lack of marketing for them and that people don't like to do the documentation. It's just a lot of legwork. But they are potentially getting thousands of dollars. So there is something to that documentation. And then they also mentioned credits only applying to districts and the requirement for an easement by some of the jurisdictions was a real sticky point.
It is.
So that might be something to take a look at and see if there's any way. The the one thing that I will say, and I hope this doesn't make anybody sad, but it made me a little bit upset. So I thought I would research it and and explain it was that the ag tax credits for Washington County, just to to put this into perspective, even though it's a different program with with different requirements, just to give you an idea on the usage. For 20, for 2020, the ag tax credits covered 402 tax accounts. Just for 2020, they have 402 tax accounts participating with $430,000 in credits being issued. So just to give you an idea of a program that the county has that is well used for tax credit purposes, that is, obviously, I don't think we're going to get there in a year. But I would like to see some use in excess of the ones that we're getting right now. We we haven't had any applications. And obviously, there's a reason for that. So we need to work on it. Any questions about this page?
So, yeah, there's no minimal dollar amount was that was from one of the one of the counties? No minimal dollar amount? Because so often they, there is a minimum.
Yeah, and I know there's minimums at the state and federal level, but they didn't have one at the county level. But yes, that's what that meant for that jurisdiction. Any other questions? Okay, so this slide was just to kind of see how other jurisdictions are handling surveys and and updating of those surveys. And obviously, it seems that everybody's in the same boat as funding allows is when they do their updates. And I did this for more than 10 resources because they can do one or two resources a year, maybe at the staff level. But going above that is is obviously where you're getting into consultant and funding needed. And then whether or not they had prioritized historic resources to better distribute any funding initiatives. So feel free to to give any comments you might have on that. But I think it seems like that's something that you're okay with us researching prioritizing, but it's not the priority for for HDC right now. So getting the pictures updated and getting the statuses updated first.
Yeah.
Okay. And then any additional information? I put this up here, but I'm sure you guys can go back through and read that from them. Just that everybody is in the same boat. They they all have their own specific programs. Some are a little bit more robust and actually have archaeology departments and historic and scenic roads and things like that that might be something you guys want to pursue. And then also, people are working on their own comprehensive plans and things like that that they want to information share. So we can certainly do that. Any comments on that section?
What what Anarundel County does is very impressive. We're just, we're just not in Anarundel County.
Not there yet. Maybe one day. And then I think this is my last talking slide. Bear with me one more. We did, Jill and I both attended. And then I think it was Vernal, you were there as well for the heart of the Civil War Heritageary Meeting. I just wanted to provide a quick summary. And then for now, if you want to add anything after that, feel free. The meeting was held remotely June 18th. You can see some reports from the members. I think these are a couple of highlights that that I picked out was that with Antietam, they've seen a lot of local visitors instead of just out of state. But their usual traffic is starting to pick back up again. Many of the entities that attended the meeting Many of the entities that attended the meeting are actually starting to reopen from their pandemic-related closures. And then we did have a report about hotel occupancy being drastically down, but it's starting to pick back up. And then, of course, you know, the, the topic of monuments in Sharpsburg as well. They also did the Section 106 review for US Alt. 40 and did decide to send a letter regarding that, just in, in favor with no comment. They did also discuss some boundary amendments for the area for the Aviation Museum and then Kiwanis Park. And basically, the way that it was left was that those applications can proceed, and then they will be reviewed when they're returned to the staff and the, the actual members of the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area to review. And then there will be mini-grant opportunities, which could potentially be expanded to additional funding areas. And then grant decisions will be made July 9th by the Maryland Heritage Area Authority, and that's a public meeting. And we do have the information available if anybody wanted to listen in and see where some of the local projects ended up. Vernell, if you have anything you want to add, feel free.
I, I think that's very, very well done. Their, the requests are really not yet requests for boundary amendments, they're, they're inquiries. They haven't been formally requested, but they're saying, you know, go ahead and ask. The advisory council is saying, you know, by all means, pursue it.
Yes, that's a much better way of wording it. I couldn't think of a good way to word it, but that's a very good way to word it.
Yeah, I got that. Yeah, and grant, there's a possibility that those grants might be considered for operating expenses, which is something that has not been the, the situation in the past. And operating expenses usually are not part of grant possibilities. So that, that was really an exciting change. And the, I think that all of the grants submitted have been forwarded to, to the headquarters for consideration for the July 9th. So you're right, you know, if you want to see what happens to the local request, that'd be right there at that time.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to talk about or bring up? Jill and Megan and I were chatting a little bit earlier on about the potential with the Dollar General at Sharpsburg, but really, there's nothing for us to talk about right now except speculation, so.
Yeah, just to jump in on that, Tom, basically what I was trying to tell people, I'll, I'll repeat this, that it will be reviewed, the Dollar General store is going to be on the Planning Commission agenda Monday evenings, coming Monday. The reason it's going to be on the agenda is because the existing property is in a rural business overlay district, which allows for, you know, rural business, retail services, that kind of thing. And anytime the use changes, it's required to be reviewed by the Planning Commission to determine whether or not the use is a significant change or whether it's going to be a significant change in the intensity. And the planning, that's the only thing the Planning Commission is really going to look at, is determine whether or not it, it's going to be a significant change in the use of that property. If they say no, it won't be a significant change, then they still must go through the site plan process. It still must go through district commission review, because it is in the Antietam overlay. You, your board does have approval-denial authority over building permits. So they must meet the aesthetic that we require them to meet in that area. But all of that is just, you know, superfluous at this point, until we figure out whether or not that the intensity thing is, is going to happen. If the Planning Commission does decide that is, that the use is going to be changing or is a significant change in use, then what happens is, is that it will go back through a rezoning process, a public hearing rezoning process. So we could be anywhere from months to a year out from talking about the historic impact of the potential use there. We'll, we'll see how this all plays out, but Monday night is strictly a discussion of whether or not it needs to have another public hearing to, to change the use.
Well, hopefully that's. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, it sounds as if that there's going to be a heck of a lot more activity at that site than we have at Kehoe's Art Gallery at this time. So I would anticipate just what you're saying, a public hearing sometime in the future.
Most likely, but you never know how, how that'll be looked at. There's a lot of different ways to look at how that use will play. Is it just retail, because there's retail there now? How much of a change is it to go to a different type of retail? But it'll, it'll be interesting to hear the conversation and see how that goes. But yeah, one way or another, if it does, if they do wish it to move forward, it obviously will come to this committee for review and comment on the historic aspects of it, the architectural review.
Okay, thank you, Jill, and thank you, Megan. Anything else to?
I was going to ask a question, is there any update on the Herald Review site?
I don't think there's anything official yet, but to the best of my knowledge, it appears that the project has potentially fallen through. There's not been any movement in the last several months from the Project Cardinal folks. I haven't, like I said, I haven't received any official comment, but it appears that, that the project has stalled or maybe even is, is done. We're still researching, because I think the idea behind the demo permit is, is that it's still a valid permit. I am checking into sunset provisions, if there's a sunset provision on a permit, so that if you don't complete the demolition within a certain period of time, the permit expires. I don't know, I'm checking into that. Building Code Official, I need to speak to, has been on vacation. So once he gets back, I'm going to try to confirm that information and have that back to you for the next meeting. But to my knowledge, it's, it's a go, it's because the permit is not attached to a specific project, it is just a permit for demolition period. And it is held by the Review and Herald Company, because they are the property owners. Like I said, at this point in time, I don't foresee them moving forward. It was never their interest, truthfully, to demolish those structures. They were simply going with whatever the buyer wanted at that moment. So now that, that may not be the, the buyer, and things may change, we may have another shot at trying to keep those structures.
I was going to ask Jill if, and, and you're probably best to advise the commission on this, is it? Can't even figure out how to phrase it. Is, can the commission send a letter to the Herald Review stating that they would like them to consider giving back the demolition permit? If the sale fail, the sale falls through? I don't know how to, how to word that correctly, but I think you get my.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can do that.
Yeah.
Not unless there's an expiration, if it's not activated, as Jill, as Jill thought, maybe there is.
I'd probably have to verify 100% that the sale has fallen through. I would, I would say that if we can verify that, then I think it could be valid for this entity to send a letter of concern just saying, you know, we'd be, you know, completely grateful if, if you would invalidate the, the permit. I think I brought this up last time. We received, I received an email from a gentleman, his name's not going to come to me now, but apparently they are interested in removing both the barn and the house and relocating the structures in whole. I don't know how that would work exactly, I would assume they would have to deconstruct and then reconstruct, but to move it elsewhere in the county. I haven't heard anything, I put him directly in contact with the Review and Herald Company to discuss that. So I don't, I haven't heard anything, maybe I could check in on that with that guy. I still have the email somewhere, I could just check in and see if he's heard anything, maybe get an update on, on that little aspect of the storyline.
Yeah, if, if you could, Jill, I would appreciate updating as soon as you know about whether this fellow is still interested, and also whether those permits have a sunset provision. I'd like to know that before the August meeting, if, if possible.
Will do, we'll check on that.
All right, thank you. Vernell, Anne, anything else?
No, thank you very much, Megan and Jill, excellent meeting.
Yes, indeed, thank you. All right, then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Seconded.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, yeah, this was great. Megan, you're doing a terrific job with all this stuff, very impressive, and we'll see.